Are we ready for the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to read the call. Notice of public meeting of the city-
I don't, I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm trying. I'm gonna go a little closer. Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop and a regular meeting on Tuesday, July 12, 2011, at 5:45 PM and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A: Discussion Regarding an Update Report from the Environmental Advisory Committee as per Ordinance Number 2010-911-F.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. The Ordinance 2010-911-F calls for regular reports to this ordinance, and this is essentially one of those reports that I'll be updating you and the public where we're at today. Essentially, later tonight, there will be an agenda item to place a new commissioner to serve on this board with Mr. Camarillo no longer being there. But essentially, some of the highlights of tonight, what I wanted to update are, we're now six months into this ordinance. We're at a point right now where our board, the advisory board, will be meeting next month, and we'll be trending the numbers regarding the fees. We're also going to be discussing some projects that I believe are shovel-ready for the use of some of the fee that has come in under this ordinance. I just wanted to bring all the commissioners up to date. This ordinance passed last year. It went into effect January 5th of this year, and there was an environmental advisory committee that was set in place under this ordinance. They're essentially charged with monitoring the effects of the ordinance, and we meet regularly. The environmental fees that are collected, 95% of that comes to the city, 5% goes to the business that chooses to do this. Now, a business is not required to charge this fee. It is only a temporary surcharge should they choose to offer. The environmental fee is only there should they choose to do single-use plastic bags. There's nothing in the ordinance that says they must do this. Can you go to slide four? And essentially, that was the background I wanted to give as to the ordinance and the parts of the ordinance. Now, there's certain projects that I believe were shovel-ready that will be coming back to you as commission agenda items for approval. I just wanted to highlight on some of the recommendations that the EAC committee has done. Essentially, we're looking at what we would reinvigorate the Make a Difference project, which many years ago consisted of paying cash for bulky waste to our citizens. So essentially, this would be a way for the citizens to get that dollar they paid for, the single-use bag, through what we foresee would be a project about the second week of August. August 13th right now is a date that we're working with to have a Make a Difference Day for our citizens, potentially looking at two locations. The goal of those cleanups would be to clean the city of abandoned TVs, electronics, appliances, unwanted furniture, mattresses, tires, et cetera. We have found through past experience many, many years ago that there's no faster way to clean up a city than to offer pennies for the amount of waste that comes in. It was a very fruitful project about 12 years ago, and I think we can revive that project and have some excellent results this time around. The specifics right now are in the works, and I will provide more through city management on specifically what the location will be, the times, the dates. And we're looking at setting aside about $10,000 to $15,000 for this event being held at two different locations on the same date. Again, it would not be construction debris or anything that we feel could be part of the regular waste process. Another project that we're looking at is, if you recall, many of the high visibility areas are along our highways, our major roads leading into Brownsville. Specifically here, we're looking at a project to contract with TechStot on increasing the routine cleanups along the northern point of the highway all the way to the Los Tomates Bridge. Essentially, the city of Brownsville has more right-of-way in our city than other cities such as McAllen, Mission, San Benito do. Many of those cities have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 miles. We believe have up to 20 miles of highway. We're looking at working on a shovel-ready contract at this point with TechStot so that we could have them do two or maybe even three additional cleanups with some of the funds of the, that has come in from the dollar, the dollar fee. We believe that this would be one way to clean up the city, the anti-littering that we're seeing out there. Another project that, I'm gonna go back, and there should be one called Trash. It should be a slide, yeah. Intelligent Waste Collection. Essentially, based on this, one of our most often heard complaints in the health department is that there's not enough trash collection points. We went back and checked, and currently, we have about 192 trashcans in the city, in the downtown area that our crews do. They clean up six times a week, and one of the projects that we're looking at bringing to you here is a potential new system, a waste collection system, that actually will email the city when the trashcans are full, but it also comes with a built-in trash compactor, allowing for that trashcan to be filled many more times than a regular trashcan would. The potentials over a 10-year period to the city should we go in this pathway would be between $1.2 to $1.5 million per 10 years. And the cost would be because of savings from fuel and savings from work hours by the employees having to go back and recheck those trashcans time and time. Where specifically we would do this, that's still up. We're working with management, and we can work with the City Commission to see which areas, just some ideas being touted. It could be the Mid-Cultural District. It could be downtown. It could be a stretch of major-use roads, many points throughout the city. Currently, based on the analysis from a company running this, we estimate that the collection frequency could go from six to two times a week with this system. This is just numbers, random numbers. If 100 compacted trashcans were placed, another source of revenue could be wraps, such as the bus department does for their buses. It would be to put wraps around the trashcans, potentially that would be another source of revenue. So I think this type of system would be a good return on investment because we would pay upfront for the trashcans. They would yield revenue, and at this point, we believe that the nature of this project would also allow us to maybe collaborate with certain grants. The city of El Paso used Ara funds to purchase some of these recently. I don't recall the number, but it was a good amount of these cans, and they come with sister compartments that allow for recycling. That's been another point that's been brought up, too, is not only about littering, but about recycling efforts. Can I go back to that one? Our current EAC committee is formed by these organizations. We have representatives from the downtown area, the major retailers, also major grocery stores, healthy communities, the Chamber of Commerce, convenience stores, our major retailer in North Brownsville, Sunrise Small, and some small mom-and-pop stores here in the area. That's essentially the update to date. The amount of money that has come in to date, now, keep in mind, this represents less than 1% of the total money that comes in for the respective stores such as the major retailers is less than 1%. To date, the city has received about $185,000 from the plastic bag fee remittances, and that is according to, again, the Walmarts, the HEVs. This is less than 1% of their total sales. They tell us that most of the people who pay in the dollars are visitors to Brownsville who are not aware of the ordinance, or in some instances, business owners who actually are building this into their cost of service because they use the plastic bags for other uses. That is the summary of my report at this time.
Okay. Art, thank you. So I can kind of summarize just a little bit. You've collected over $100,000 on this particular fee thus far, is that what I understand?
$185,000, yes, sir.
Okay. And the idea of the cash for trash, basically, is to give it back to the community in conjunction with what the purpose of that fee was, I think. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And now, in conjunction with the intelligent recycling or trash, that's basically, if I understood correctly, is it's a solar-driven component. It's basically a trash compactor, and so you really have to pick it up a little less, and it serves two purposes. You recycle, and you save money in both different ways. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for your report. And just so that the public knows, Alex Resendez, who's a dear friend, is asking to say something, but Alex, in all fairness, I don't have that latitude under the workshop. I'm gonna have to, you know, save it for public forum, and you have requested, and I'm happy to have you there at that time.
Well, this is only to help on the workshop, I think, with that. I mean, I'm all for it.
And I'm not saying that the problem that I have from a parliamentarian standpoint of view, it's, we're in a public forum, and I don't know that I have the ability or authority to deviate. At a later time, I'm gonna ask the lawyer to, I don't want to violate any ordinances or parliamentarian proceedings.
I understand.
So it's not because I don't want you to comment, but-
Well, my opinion is that you're not violating anything else. This is to help the workshop that you're talking about.
Okay. Well, I, you know, for future reference, I'm gonna find out what my regulation, what my boundaries are, okay? But I thank you, okay? Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, yeah, will you go ahead and call the regular meeting to order?
The pledge of allegiance, please.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state and I got one individual.
The invocation is gonna be by Lance Hostetter from the Central Christian Church.
Thank you. Will you pray with me? Lord, I thank you for this day and for this opportunity to come together. We thank you for our city, and we pray your blessing upon it. We pray now and ask a prayer for our public servants, for those who guard our freedoms, both in our country and here locally. I pray and ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Estella, would be my-
Item number one would be mayor's report.
Okay. Under my mayor's report, let me just make comment of some things that were, I think, extremely important to the city that was announced today during the noon time. United Way of Southern Cameron County had requested some money from an organization out of North Carolina, the MDC, and I'm proud and glad to announce that today, the Bill Gates Foundation will be awarding over a three-year period a cash award from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation of $1.299,909 million. In-kind award from the Gates Foundation for technical assistance will be another $200,000. And in order to get this particular money, we had to have a local effort of donors in the amount of $240,000, which was gathered. But I think it's a great day for the city of Brownsville because, basically, this is, the idea for this project is to make sure that our children go beyond post-secondary. And the idea right now that we're having in the educational components of this country is that we not only get the children educated and make sure that they stay in school, and they found that the critical portion was between the middle school. It is now believed that unless we encourage these children from pre-K and therefore also give them an arch to their careers, to where they're gonna be placed, and basically, it's from cradle to career that we won't have any success in obtaining these children to a good career. So it's a great day for Brownsville. It's a great day for the United Way, and I congratulate them and all their efforts and their committees for having gotten this. Couple other things, we were, this morning, we were also at West Morrison for the groundbreaking of the west side of the Morrison Avenue, and so I commend Charlie, all of the people that participated in that effort. I know that that's a developer and city-driven, so it's a private and public sector effort, and you're to be congratulated on that one. Of course, the East Morrison is a TechStot and city effort, and that's already been, it's well on its way. So hopefully, in the near future, we will have less congestion traffic-wise, we'll have safety, and we'll have efficiency in our traffic patterns. On another note, on Saturday, and this is sort of like an update of how our city is progressing in so many different ways, there was a ground opening that I think some of you probably saw in the paper, a new Catholic parish, the Lord of Divine Mercy, was inaugurated, and that congregation ought to be congratulated for their efforts. They seem to think that maybe the next six or seven months, they'll have a building which can be occupied for their services. This Saturday, there will be a groundbreaking for Subclínica Familias on Alton Gore Road, which, again, all of these things, regardless of what sector of society or Brownsville you're at, these are all indications, I think, for all of us to feel very proud of Brownsville, feel very proud of our city management and the efforts that the individuals in the community are doing so that we can continue to move forward. Kind of as in another set of what was going on, the city manager and Pete Gonzalez, the deputy city manager and myself, and a couple of the fellows, we were in Dallas over the weekend on Sunday and Monday to speak with the people that will rate our bonds, the Standard and Poor, Moody's, and Fitch, is that correct? And we had a very, I thought, a very good meeting. We had Gilbert Salinas from the Economic Development Council, who made some fine presentations, and then Mike Gonzalez from United Brownsville, who was also present, and I think everybody contributed, and I thank them for, Pete, Charlie, for a good outing, okay?
Thank you, sir.
The, there's another item that I was inquiring to our city attorney, the ethics code, the progress of it. It's, they've got some drafts coming our way within the next week, and God willing, we will be able to present something on a draft to the city commissioners. And by the way, welcome, Estella, John. This is your first meeting, correct? So, welcome. But hopefully, we'll get a chance to visit with that, and in that vein, the other thing that there's some, in the agenda, there are some appointments on some different committees, and I just wanted to make this observation, if I could. There are some appointments that have to do with city commissioners, and I believe that those need to be addressed, and depending on how the commission feels about it, but those need to have, are action items that will be voted on and hopefully be filled this evening. There are a couple of appointments to the PUB, and those are reappointments, if you will, where we have already established the qualifications of the committee members, and we have inquired as of the CEO and the different entities within the management, and these folks that are up for reappointment have actually done a terrific job, and they've spent the time, they've spent the effort, and they're recommending that they continue in those efforts. And the other part of it is, and I think the public needs to know, is that, you know, they are in the process right now of trying to figure out how they can move a Resaca dredging program forward. They have to get approval from the department or the Corps of Engineers. They're working hard at it. They've looked at machinery, at the different kinds of things that would require to start that project, so that would be another consideration of why they should be continued in their positions. And lastly, there are some that are brand-new, and as most of you know, there is an application process that was instituted some time back, but from my standpoint, or my mayoral duties, I feel like those ought to be tabled for right now until further notice, and I'm gonna give the public the reason why. I think that some of those committee, all the committees that have some openings, we should, and city manager and city attorney, I don't know whether I'm correct on this, but what I would like to do in the future is somehow advertise that to the general public so we know what vacancies are available, what it takes, how often they meet, how long the term is for, and so people get a chance to, or we get a chance to somehow or another have a process whereby we appoint the best qualified and the person who has the time. I've gone through some of those committees, and oftentimes, I find that some of these folks cannot make it a whole lot, they have other commitments, and I'm not saying they're bad members, I'm just saying that sometimes we don't always have the time because we don't always know what time, what kind of time commitment's gonna take. So I'm gonna suggest to this commission, and again, this is just my voice, is that we take a look at that process so that we can truly evaluate. One of the things that I've always felt is that one of the reasons we don't have a bigger participation from the public is that not a whole lot of people feel like they can contribute, and I want everybody to know that everybody can contribute. You're all part of this community, and not only do you want to vote, you want to participate in how we govern, and you want to participate in how we go forward. So with that, Estella, that's pretty much the comments and thoughts that I have for today. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
We'll take your notes, ma'am.
We've got notes. Commissioner's report?
Thank you. Wanted to point out to everyone that the Buena Vista Playground, which, as you remember, we received for free from a grant from the state, had another addition. I think Chris is back there, a very big green shade structure. We had some money left over in the grant to be able to provide that shade structure. It is quite hot on the backside of that building. So now, please, take a moment to take your kids down there, check it out. It is a very, a very interactive playground, very, very modern with rock climbing and all of that, for especially the small children, and now there is shade so that you don't get a sunstroke while you're out there. And in conjunction with that grant, since the state feels that we did a great job, we may actually be bringing some news about another park that will be free that we'll begin working on now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone, Estella, do we go down, or is anyone else?
I didn't get anybody from the commission asking for a report.
Okay. So- process that was instituted some time back, but from my standpoint, or my mayoral duties, I feel like those ought to be tabled for right now until further notice, and I'm going to give the public the reason why. I think that some of those committee, all the committees that have some openings, we should, and city manager and city attorney, I don't know whether I'm correct on this, but what I would like to do in the future is somehow advertise that to the general public so we know what vacancies are available, what it takes, how often they meet, how long the term is for, and so people get a chance to, or we get a chance to somehow or another have a process whereby we appoint the best qualified and the person who has the time. I've gone through some of those committees, and oftentimes, I find that some of these folks cannot make it a whole lot, they have other commitments, and I'm not saying they're bad members, I'm just saying that sometimes we don't always have the time because we don't always know what time, what kind of time commitment's going to take. So I'm going to suggest to this commission, and again, this is just my voice, is that we take a look at that process so that we can truly evaluate. One of the things that I've always felt is that the, one of the reasons we don't have a bigger participation from the public is that not a whole lot of people feel like they can contribute, and I want everybody to know that everybody can contribute. You're all part of this community, and not only do you want to vote, you want to participate in how we govern, and you want to participate in how we go forward. So with that, Estella, that's pretty much the comments and thoughts that I have for today, okay?
Thank you, sir.
We've got notes.
Commissioners' report?
Thank you. Wanted to point out to everyone that the Buena Vista Playground, which as you remember, we received for free from a grant from the state, had another addition, I think Chris is back there, a very big green shade structure. We had some money left over in the grant to be able to provide that shade structure. It is quite hot on the backside of that building, so now, please, take a moment to take your kids down there, check it out. It is a very, a very interactive playground, very, very modern with rock climbing and all of that, for especially the small children, and now there is shade so that you don't get a sunstroke while you're out there. And in conjunction with that grant, since the state feels that we did a great job, we may actually be bringing some news about another park that will be free, that we'll begin working on now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone, Estella, do we go down, or is anyone else?
I didn't get anybody from the commission asking for a report.
Okay, so at this particular point, I think the next one would be the proclamation?
Yes, sir, proclamation for the Brownsville Literacy Center.
Okay. The proclamation reads as follows, "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the Brownsville Adult Literacy Council for 25 years of dedicated service to our community. Whereas the individual who cannot read and write has little chance of economic self-sufficiency in today's world, and whereas, in response to the profound unmet literacy needs of the Brownsville community, the Brownsville Adult Literacy Council, Inc., was established in 1986 as a private nonprofit adult literacy provider, and has been funded by private charitable and corporate donations, United Way and Community Development Block grant funds. And whereas the council operates Brownsville Literacy Center, where adults and families can access basic literacy skills and English as a second language instruction, now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do here recognize, congratulate, and support Brownsville Literacy Center's efforts to promote literacy and empower the underserved adults and families in our great city, and further urge all of our citizens to become aware of the value of volunteerism as demonstrated by the many dedicated volunteers at Brownsville Literacy Center, serving the community for the past quarter-century. Done on this day, the fifth day of July, 2011. Signed by myself as mayor, Estella Chavez as city commissioner, Ricardo Longoria Jr., commissioner, Melissa Asamora, city commissioner, Rose M. Gowan, MD, city commissioner, Jessica Tetro, city commissioner, and John L. Yarrell, city commissioner." Congratulations. Good job.
Great job. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
and friends of literacy, I would like to recognize some of our founders whose vision made the center possible. The center would like to thank Doug Hardy, Christie and Richard Burton, Tony Garza, Bud Richards, and Mrs. Mary Iturria, to name a few, along with thanks to all previous board members, volunteers, and donors that make the center possible. We also would like to recognize what a blessing the City of Brownsville has been to the literacy center, and most importantly, to our students over the years. Throughout the 25 years the literacy center programs have touched and changed the lives of over 15,000 students. On behalf of the board of directors, students, and staff, we want to thank you, mayor, the commission, and the City of Brownsville for supporting the Brownsville Literacy Center. The center continues to thrive through the continued support from United Way, E S G P, and C D B G funds, not to mention the recent collaborative grant through the city's Brownsville Public Library system. We are confident that you will continue to deem the center worth of your support. We thank you for the long-term trust you have placed in us, and as always, we pledge to be good stewards of your trust. We also remind you that the center can always use more support, and our doors are always open to students who wish to learn and community members who wish to support the effort by volunteering. So please volunteer and make our community a better one. Thank you all.
Thank you. You started before I told them who you were. Everybody knows who this is. Kiko Rendon, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm also a board member at the literacy center, I'm going on my 10th year already.
Well, good. I guess if I follow this, you continue to be a hero, okay?
Thank you.
Next item would be presentations.
Presentations of Dean Porter Park.
Dean Porter Park Christmas Village photo.
Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, I'm Melina Connor and Roberto Reese. We are representatives of the Holiday Village. In 2010, a partnership was established between the Midicultural District, the Parks and Recreation Department, and a group of community volunteers who came together to create a new and exciting activity, Brownsville's first Holiday Village. A unique exhibit of small-size cottages, each built with its own holiday theme, decorated with lights on the inside and the outside, and viewed through the large windows, gave an air of excitement for both children and adults. I would like to recognize the members of the project advisory team and members of the Midicultural District that are here this evening. I would like to have them please stand. We come to you today to thank you for the city's support of the Parks Department and its many workers, the Police Department, which were so instrumental in helping safely transport those 10 cottages on a flatbed trailer from the airport work site to the Midicultural District and the Dean Porter Park. We appreciate the vast support of Chris Patterson, Hawk Scott, and the Dean Porter Park employees who all provided help to this endless request for our new exhibit. The project advisory team, made up of volunteer professional architects, builders, painters, electricians, and community suppliers, all made that happen. Those first three sponsors, GMS, the Lower Valley Dental Associates, and Wells Fargo Bank and advisors, had the courage to be the first leaders to offer support. We thank them. Presently, we are seeking 2011 event and cottage sponsors. New cottages will be added to those original 10. It is our intent to build new cottages each year, growing and creating a true tourist destination for the holiday season. I might also say that as we grow, we are going to need facilities, a large warehouse where we can build and we can store our cottages on a yearly basis. Opening for 2011 will be November the 21st, the week of Thanksgiving, and the cottages will remain in place until January 1 of 2012. So far, we have five cottages, many more proposals are out in the public, and we are knocking on those doors as we go. Your packet, commissioners, gives you more complete information. Please feel free to share that with anyone you feel might be interested in participating in our new village. The building specifications that we have provided, which are very strict, can be obtained from any of our members. There will be musical presentations throughout the season. Those themes will be, the times will be on the website and other publications. Anyone wishing, again, to participate in our event are welcome. If you will just contact any one of us, we'll be glad to have you. Before closing, I would like, on the behalf of our project advisory team, to present a framed composite of the 2010 cottages. This was, the photographs were taken by John Falk. We'd like to present one to our city manager, Charlie Kabler, and to Chris Patterson, who are, because without their efforts and their enthusiasm in the beginning, this would have never come to fruition. Thank you very much, thank you for your time, your interest, and your support. We welcome any questions that you may have of us. We have our wonderful volunteer architect here, Roberto Reese, who is responsible for the design of most of these, and we would appreciate if anybody has any questions.
I don't think I have any questions, but Roberto, I want to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and Melina as well. I happen to have the unique pleasure of going to that warehouse on a Saturday morning, and while we were building one of our own cottages, so I know what great effort she went through, and so, thank you.
Well, it was a joy, and I cannot speak too much for all of the volunteers that put in their time. The builders got very excited about the project.
It was fun.
We cannot thank them enough for their services.
They did a great job, so a round of applause, guys.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, Chris.
I'd like to thank Ms. Connor. I'd like to thank her, but most importantly, we want to let you know that our department's two most stressful days are taking the cottages to Dean Porter Park and returning them safely. It was a very stressful 48 hours, but Melanie, we really appreciate everything you do, all the group. There's a lot of people involved, and you'd be here all day talking about who's involved, but appreciate it. Look forward to this year.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, I think next is yours.
Next is the Employee of the Month.
That was very nice. Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome the Employee of the Month for the month of July, Jorge Silva. Jorge is employed at the Public Works Department, he is an equipment operator, and as the recent storms that we had recently, we just tried to identify employees that go beyond the call of duty and just go out of their way to help us out. We had, as you know, during that rainstorm, huge pressures put on Public Works as to areas of the city that need assistance right away, and even after the storm, we need locations to be addressed. Jorge has taken on a huge responsibility that he's always available to, is very enthusiastic, he shows up at all the locations, he has just done a wonderful job of crafting the idea of being able to repair areas of the city, as for example, streets and things like that that have issues at that moment, he can do it pretty quickly, he has mastered that equipment, he has been able to help our other employees learn this equipment and really train them into what we want is responsibility and accountability and a loyalty to our citizens. So we are going to honor him today with the Employee of the Month, and of course, he gets the plaque, Employee of the Month, to Jorge Silva of the Public Works Department for the month of July 2007 for your outstanding work for the city. Thank you, Jorge. Of course, he gets the men's watch that we have been giving out, and the pin, recognized him as an Employee of the Month, and of course, he is eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December, so congratulations, Jorge. Now he will take the speaking oath.
Si, estoy muy agradecido de hablar en español. Este, pues le estoy muy agradecido a la ciudad, principalmente como ciudadano, este, me encuentro contento de que mis superiores, jefes, este, me hayan tomado en cuenta mi trabajo, y este, pues es un gran anhelo para seguir adelante trabajando y sirviendo a la ciudad de Brownsville. Muchas gracias.
Felicidades, eh? Gracias.
Number five, consent agenda items.
Estella, I think that on one of the minutes, one of the meetings, you said you had some minor corrections?
Right, the minutes have been corrected.
Okay.
According to what I was informed of.
So I would entertain a motion.
I will, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's the approval of A through F.
Right, and with corrections. Item six, consideration and action to appoint one alternate city commissioner to the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council.
Make a motion to appoint Mayor, is this yours, or this is the alternate?
No, this, I think this would be, I have already been, well, I have already been on, I'm already on the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, as a matter of fact, I think I'm secretary. I'm on the executive committee.
An alternate.
We need an alternate from the commission at this particular point.
I apologize.
I'd move to appoint Commissioner Asamora.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Forgot to have a discussion. I'm sorry.
Getting me back to that comment.
That's right. Consideration and action to appoint a member or members of the Airport Advisory Board, and I think there's a couple of applications. Larry Brown is here, in conformity with my actions previously, I would entertain a motion to table to a later date, if anybody would so agree with me.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number eight is consideration and action to reappoint two members to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board, and this was the one that I made previous mention of, this is Arturo Farias, who has served four years, is presently the chairman of that board, and Manny Vasquez. For the sake of the commission, I have checked with the administration of the P U B, they have attended all their meetings, they have done a wonderful job for the last four years, and they both have said they have the time to dedicate to this effort for the next four years, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint them. It's a four-year term, and their term expired July 1 of this year, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint them for the next four years.
Motion to reappoint both gentlemen.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration and action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, and this one was tabled 6/21/2011. Again, I will have the board do as they will, however, I think that it would be appropriate to table it till we decide that we have a process in place that would be appropriate on how we are doing these appointments.
Move to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay, I'll take a first and a second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration and action to appoint one city commissioner to the Environmental Advisory Committee, as set out in ordinance number 2010-911-F, Arturo, and just for a little bit of history, and so the public knows what I have done, I have talked to Arturo, Commissioner Edward Camarillo was on this particular advisory board, I took the liberty of calling Commissioner Yarrell, since I knew that they were good friends, and really, a whole lot happens in that advisory board with your district, and he has said that he would be willing to continue in those efforts, so. Do I hear a motion?
Being okay with the council, I'll nominate Commissioner John Yarrell.
Second.
Okay, we, person, Commissioner has been named, motioned and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Public comment, period. Public comment period.
Good luck.
Consideration and action to adopt resolution number 2011-044 to authorize the city manager to file a grant application with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Elderly Individuals with Disabilities Program for fiscal year 2012.
Mayor and Commissioners, we are requesting approval for a grant application for fiscal year 2012 for the replacement of two paratransit vehicles, as well as our ongoing transportation maintenance program. We're asking for $245,013, I'm sorry, $245,013, of which $45,013 will be local match. This is under FTA, which is seen through and passed through to, through Texas.
Who to approve?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. You're back.
I'm sorry, for the record, Angela Munoz, Assistant Director for Bus.
Okay, thank you. It didn't look like Norma.
Item 13, consideration and action on resolution number 2011-045 to accept voluntary annexation request by Valley Municipal Utility District Number Two and setting public hearing date annexation proceedings and dealing with related matters.
Honorable Mayor Martinez and Commissioners, with this resolution, it sets out August the 16th, 2011, and September 6th, 2011, for a proposed annexation along the 1732 Merriman Road. It's a request by the landowner, Valley Mudd Number Two. So, basically, this resolution is setting the public hearing dates that have to be published in the paper.
You first.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ben.
Item 14, consideration and action to authorize and execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville, Texas, and Cameron County, Texas regarding fiscal year 2011 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $88,294.
Mayor, members of the commission, good evening. The last city commission that came before you seeking authorization to apply for Department of Justice, Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $88,294. Today, I'm before you to approve an interlocal agreement between us, the City of Brownsville, and Cameron County as to how the amount of money respectively for each of the agencies and definitely any reimbursement reports or requests, I'm sorry, that have to be done by the county to the city and all the reporting procedures that we need to account for to the Department of Justice.
Want to approve?
Rick, okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Chief.
May I be alone real quick, Chief?
Sir.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Item 15, consideration and action to award a contract for architectural design work for plumbing problems, relocating toilets to the east side of the building, accommodating revisions to the technical services, enlarging the cafe and relocating the friend's room to allow expansion of other areas of the Brownsville Main Public Library.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, stop recommendation is to award a contract for architectural design and construction management. For architectural design, work for plumbing problems, relocating toilets at the east side of the building, accommodating revisions to the technical services, enlarging the cafe and relocating the friend's room to allow expansion of other areas at the main city library. And this is going to Walker Perez Associates of Brownsville, Texas, in the amount of $87,510. The renovation estimate cost of design, it's around a million and a half, and funding, it's in place. The administration of the Public Library Department concurs with this recommendation.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I move adjourn?
You may.
Thank you, sir.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.